I believe we're all ready.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Staff, and everyone present, Council members and at home. It is 7:00 PM, and I have started the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Could you please call the role?
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Carter?
Present.
Commissioner Berset?
Present.
Vice Chair Menthee?
Present.
Chair Rollman?
Present.
Thank you. We have five Commissioners present.
Wonderful, thank you. Commissioner Berset, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
We do not have any, Chair.
Okay, great. So we're tabling E1 until another time?
Yes.
Yeah. Can we have a motion to accept the receipt of correspondence?
Are your buttons lit? Or nope, I'll take a voice, I'll take a voice motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. Thank you, moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Menthee. Please vote.
There we go.
Thank you, motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you very much. Moving to the consent items, C1 is the approval of the minutes of July 24th. Is there any comments or questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Thank you, moved by Vice Chair Menthee, second by Commissioner Berset. Please vote. Thank you, motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to item PH1, consideration of a site plan review to allow the demolition of existing one-story, single-family dwelling unit and the construction of a new two-story, four-unit attached condominium development with subterranean parking at 4233 East Boulevard. If we could please have a staff report.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rulink Kavodis, Assistant Planner, and I am before an administrative site planner view intended parcel map for a four-unit airspace condominium subdivision. The subject site is a rectangular lot with front end on East Boulevard at the intersection with Park Avenue. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing single-family home and detached garage and to build four attached condominiums. The subject property is zoned RMD with a residential medium-density land use designation. The property is bordered by the city of Los Angeles to the north and west and by R1 and RMD zoned properties to the south and east within Culver City. The surrounding neighborhood is a mix of single-family and multifamily residential uses with a mix of commercial uses along Washington Boulevard. The project conforms with existing zoning land use designation of the neighborhood. The proposal seeks to replace the existing single-family dwelling with four attached condominiums totaling 7,857 square feet. The maximum height of the building would be 25 feet, five inches, adhering to code limit of 30 feet, and shared parking would be provided in a subterranean garage with two parking spaces per unit and two guest parking spaces. This is the proposed site plan for the project, which shows the four attached units with a driveway to the parking garage to the west side of the property and unit access to the east. The building has a modern design. The applicant has used a mix of wood treatments and window and balcony inserts to provide a varied facade throughout the building that reduces the perception of bulk and mass. The use of drought-tolerant landscaping throughout the project will help to improve the aesthetic of the property, also providing screening from adjacent single-family residences, and roof decks are also set back to increase neighborhood privacy. These are several renderings of the proposed project. The applicant will share a more detailed presentation to highlight their design choices during public hearing. In addition to the administrative site planner view, planning commission will also decide on the tentative parcel map. The municipal code allows for smaller lot sizes for condominium purposes, and the applicant is proposing for airspace condominiums. The existing parcel size will not change and otherwise meets code standard, and public right-of-way and utility access will be maintained and finalized during final map approval. As part of project review, staff does review compliance with the provisions of SB8. The city's Housing and Human Services Department determined that the subject property is exempt from SB8 based on existing tenants' record of income. The project held two community meetings during the entitlement review, which influenced the sign that is proposed tonight. The project was noticed to the public on August 7, 2024. Prior to public hearing, staff received four emails from the public, and those were forwarded to the Planning Commission for record. The project is considered exempt from CEQA as a Class III Small Structures project for the development of four units and a Class 15 Minor Land Division for four airspace parcels. And at this time, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the motion to adopt a resolution adopting categorical exemption and approving the administrative site planner view intended parcel map, subject to the conditions of approval. Staff is available for any questions you may have for us, and the applicant team has their own presentation that they will provide during public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Before we open the public hearing, do any Commissioners have, you know, clarifying questions for staff? Commissioner, or Vice Chair Menthee?
Just two questions. The first is, I saw a map there. My understanding, I looked at the maps earlier, is that it was a very tiny portion of this was in it, Los Angeles. Does that, do we, does that pose any issues for us here tonight?
That doesn't, there are no issues. If we look at the, there we go, if we look at the site plan, you'll see in the corner just a small portion of the driveway falls into the city of LA, but otherwise, the city of Los Angeles has, you know, relinquished their control of the project to us.
And when you mentioned the mailers were mailed out, were they mailed also to Los Angeles residents or just Culver City residents?
They were mailed to Los Angeles residents as well.
Right, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? I just wanted to ask one thing, you know, considering what we're, the purview of what we're reviewing tonight, the kind of design slides and things like that were our kind of additional information because it's not really part of our purview. I just wanted to make sure that's clarified. Correct?
This is an administrative site planner view and a tentative parcel map. So unlike the last item that was presented, you know, that was just a TPM, you know, there would also be a design, you know, feature to this project as well. That's some of the findings that are made.
Okay, just for the findings, for consistency with the neighborhood, et cetera. Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Do we want to have a motion to open the public hearing?
Thank you, moved by Commissioner Berset, second by Vice Chair Menthee. Please vote. Thank you, motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, how many speakers do we have?
We have three registered to speak.
Including the applicant?
No, that's in addition to that.
So can we please go ahead and have the applicant give the presentation? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Bremer, I'm the architect. Thank you. I don't, like, I'll just describe kind of briefly, like, the intent of the design here, but it's more about, like, if there are questions or things you want me to clarify. It's a pretty straightforward project. The, the big kind of focus for me with the design, if you wouldn't mind just going to the renderings? Oh, I can do it, okay, sweet. I don't know, can I?
It's at the...
Okay.
I just want to speak a little closer to them.
Okay, how's that? So my biggest focus was to make sure that the building from the street didn't look like some monolithic, you know, four-unit apartment building. That, I was really trying to kind of break down the scale, break down the mass, keep it simple, create nice spaces, and use a mixture of materials that would be kind of subtle and tasteful. And that was really kind of the emphasis. The public spaces, I, well, I'm sorry, the outdoor spaces, the private spaces, the balconies, I'm carving into the building, trying to, trying to respect the privacy of the neighbors. That was a lot of what was really discussed at the neighborhood meetings was to try to make sure that the windows don't face against the adjacent neighbors and try to just be as cognizant as possible and sensitive as I could to the neighbor's privacy, you know? And I did the best that I could with that, you know? And that's pretty much it, you know? There was one email that was, that was sent, one of the comments was about how are we going to maintain the structural integrity of the shoring relative to the adjacent building? So if you look at the section on the top, on the left-hand side, you can see the outline of the adjacent building. Our subterranean parking garage is going to have shoring, so the shoring gets installed before any excavation occurs, so there's no disturbance of the adjacent grading on either side of the property. And that'll be on both sides, too. There's a single-family house on the other side, and I know that there are trees over there and stuff like that. So we're, you know, the, the shoring design is plan-checked by the Building Department, approved by the Building Department, so that's how we deal with the construction logistics of not interfering or upsetting the surrounding grade for the adjacent properties.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant here? Please.
So on the shoring, are you?
Yes.
You're not doing a tieback, though, right?
No, no tiebacks, it'll be lagging, yeah.
Can you go to the site plan of, I just want to see how everyone gets into their units? Is it one corridor on the...
Yeah, the pedestrian pathway is on the upper part of the plan. So that's east. So that's your pedestrian pathway, and there's an entrance for each of the units on that, on that side.
Did you study detached, like a four-unit detached, or did it just not fit on the lot?
It won't fit on the lot, yeah.
Okay.
Plus, when you have, I mean, you could have done it on top of a podium because we still have to have the parking, right, but it just won't fit, you know, it won't fit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time. And if we... If we could have the speakers come up and have three minutes apiece?
Our first speaker is Pam Donsley.
Hello, my name is Pam Donsley. I'm the owner of the property directly to the west of this building at 4227. And half of our property is in Culver City, and the other half is in Los Angeles, so it makes for some unique zoning issues. We have some concerns. We've had the property for a long time, and we're aware of some infrastructure problems that have existed probably for the last 25 or 30 years. One of our main concerns is the sewer line. And I know it said on the plans that were online, it would be determined, but you're going from one toilet to approximately 12 to 15 toilets on the same line. And if you look at some of the renderings, you'll see where the sewer line has exploded on the lower portion of our property several times, through the driveway and the lower easement. And we would like to know if a new pipe is going to be put in because the stress of the additional usage is going to be devastating to the old line. And then along the same vein of thought is our main sewer line going out towards East Boulevard is two feet from the property line of 4233, and they're going to be doing shoring. How can we assure that the sewer line will not rupture simply under the stress of the shoring? So this is a concern that we have. The other issues, I see that they have been working on changing them, but they're going to have rooftop access, and at one of the meetings, it was discussed that they would put planters on the west side of the building to help work as noise shields and privacy. I don't know if that has been included. And, and the other rendering, it shows instead of the block wall that had been discussed and decided upon, there's a vinyl fence, which wouldn't work as far as privacy or noise control because that would be the egress from the underground.
Your time is up. Time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tracy Harnell.
Okay. Oh, I didn't know you already started. Okay. So privacy is the main concern. I'm the house right behind, and the condo next to us on the other side, the existing one, has no windows facing, and, you know, now we have, not only, we have a deck, a roof deck, and windows. And if you go back to the line of sight, that goes directly into our yard, and we have three small children. And so I, my big concern is, like, complete lack of privacy for, for the balconies looking into our yard, also the dust pollution. We recently built an ADU, and we had to drain our pool because of all the dust that it caused. So I'm concerned about, like, what happens? Like, am I going to have to drain my, like, you can't, you know what I mean? Like, that's a lot of excavation and a lot of construction, so I'm concerned about that. Also, the trees, we have trees lining our backyard that took us years to grow, so if they're going right up to our property line and digging under, we're scared for, like, the roots of all those trees because, you know, like, again, children, privacy, and, like, you know, it's, I know that he's putting in trees, too, but, like, the roots, you know what I mean, like, for existing trees, like, we don't want those all to die. And then the, the potential devaluation of the property, the, you know, the construction of a large condo building looming over our home is likely to diminish the value of our property. So the proximity and the scale of the project, coupled with the potential loss of the privacy, are factors that prospective buyers may view negatively. So given the significance of these concerns, I kindly request that you reconsider the project's design and execution, specifically to explore alternative designs that prioritize the privacy and well-being of my family and possibly eliminating the roof deck that looks directly into our yard. And, you know, that would really appreciate the attention to these matters, and we hope that our concerns are taken into consideration as the project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, we have Steve Harnell, that's seated, his time to Michelle Ford. Are they both here? He's not here. Is Steve here? No, okay. Those are the end of our speakers, Chair.
Okay. If you can, you can come up to talk to the clerk and... You can register, you could register with the clerk to speak.
I need your name. Yesterday.
And your last name?
Hardwell, A-R-D-W-E-L-L.
All right.
Hi, I was 20 years ago. Well, the bank and I. I love my view out of my window, my master bedroom window. I was not informed when, I don't think my Realtor know, I don't think it was widely known in the neighborhood that that property was zoned R2. I mean, the building that I live in, 4249, is six units. It was built in 1986, '87. They started selling them in '87, and no one told me it could be developed, so I'm going to lose my entire view and a lot of light if this monstrosity... I spoke four years ago, I said, couldn't we please keep the park-like setting? I don't know if any of you have ever driven around East Boulevard, or if you live over there, but it's an amazingly gorgeous, gorgeous street with big trees, a lot of greenbelt, and it just sickens me that we're going to lose our view, our sunlight, plus all the things that these nice folks said about privacy and excavating. Does it have to be four units? I know all the Realtors want to maximize profit, and I'm sure the city fathers want to maximize property tax income, but come on, this is not progressive. And there's a huge tree in front. The drawings do not show that tree being there. So I hope to God those trees on the greenbelt are protected by the city, allegedly. They come and trim them, so please do not cut down that tree. There's beautiful pine trees, other deciduous trees, there's an avocado tree. I don't understand why a design couldn't have been made to preserve. I mean, all we talk about is carbon and, you know, cleaning up the air. Well, this building sure ain't going to help, and I really hope it's reconsidered because I'm flabbergasted and really disappointed that this is even being allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Ford.
Hello. I am the tenant directly next door to Pam and Don Donsley's house, and I am sorry I missed the first couple minutes, but I'll just talk about all the stuff that we've been talking about for four or five years. The height of the building, three feet taller than the condo next door. At the last meeting, which was a year or two ago, I can't remember when it was, we talked about privacy, we talked about windows, and on the condo side, some care was taken as to window placement. Well, that's aside from the fact that they're losing all their sunlight, but, but on our side of the property, all the balconies are there, all the bedroom windows there, all the bathroom windows. I mean, there's literally balconies in one of the renderings on page A 3.1. It shows all four, five balconies, one, two, three, four, five balconies, all facing our backyard. Looking, you can see into all the windows in the bedroom and everything else. I mean, it's literally like, you know, you just sit out there and watch me garden. It's just, it's ridiculous, there's like zero privacy. Maxing out the lot like this means, especially with subterranean parking, I have a big concern about that, it's going to kill their magnolia tree, which the root bowl, I'm sure, extends somewhat to their property because when you do subterranean parking, it goes right up to the property line. And, you know, we share a fence and et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, I'm also concerned about, like, they're planning on building four very expensive units. Subterranean parking, I'm an architectural interior designer, subterranean parking is incredibly expensive, so to propose something that is this elaborate in a modest width property is not really providing enough parking for conceivably eight to 16 people that could live in those, in that, on that lot. But it's, you know, that's a big concern. And so not only is the trees going to be damaged on our side, but the privacy is a huge issue, and the balconies are ridiculous, they didn't make any changes to the balcony. The other thing I brought up last time was the roof decks, quite large roof decks, which you basically can hear everybody's conversation. So it's literally if they, if everybody goes on the roof to have a summer, whatever, it's going to be like the loudest party that we can all, and we all weren't invited, whatever, it's just, it's just like a very large space. Again, you can see off the roof into, into our property, so.
Thank you.
We do not have any additional speakers, Chair.
Okay, great. I was hoping maybe the applicant wants to address a few of these comments. We can't get into a question and answer, but...
One of the things I do want to address, oh, can I go back to the drawings?
Sure, let me just pull it up for you.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're interested in seeing the sight lines and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was going to do. I was going to address the roof deck issue and, and take a look at how the balconies are placed. I mean, the, the, I, most people probably don't know that one of the zoning requirements is that you have to provide a certain amount of open space for multifamily buildings, so for each unit, you have to have a certain amount of open space. So the way that we solve that problem is to provide the rooftop decks. And we are providing planter boxes and keeping those rooftop decks separated from the edge of the property. So it might be a little bit hard to see, there's no laser on this, is there?
Yes, there is.
Oh.
It's the top button, like a cursor, yeah.
Oh. Sorry. If I hold it in?
There you go.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go, okay. So, okay, here's the staircase going up to the rooftop decks. Okay, you see this hatched area right here? That's all planting and planter boxes. So there's like a minimum of a five-foot buffer zone between the occupiable part of the roof deck and the adjacent properties, okay? Now, the other thing is, is that there are CCNRs that have to be registered with the HOA for this new development, and there's going to be a restriction that the rooftop decks can't be used after a certain period of time at night, probably, I don't know what that's going to be, but it's going to be like nine o'clock or 10 o'clock or something like that. So, and that there can be no parties up there at night and stuff like that. So there is going to be some degree of restriction as to what can occur at night on these rooftop decks. Okay? Okay, so these balconies, we've got one there, we have one here, one here, and one here. So we, we're showing, we're not doing them as open railings, we are showing them as parapets. So, and I totally understand the privacy issue, you know, like, I get that 100%, but part of the reason why we have to provide them is to fulfill all of our common open space and private open space requirements. So that's kind of how we did it, you know? We can consider putting screens up, like, we're definitely, like, open to the possibility of making changes to it, but to eliminate the balconies entirely from that side, I don't know would be possible.
You mean with the...
Correct.
I think in some of the sections you had...
Oh, yes, let's look at that. Okay, so these are short sections, right? So they're looking at the condominium building on the east side, and then the single-family on the west. Well, I think that that might be taken from, in the very... Well, I think that that might be taken from, in the very back of the property. This is more towards the front. So that shows the front house, right? So it is showing, and we do have a parapet, right? So you're seeing a person, you know, the sightline with the parapet. It is, and again, like, I'm not, like, I, privacy is a problem here. It always is when you do infill development. Every building I've ever worked on, there's always that issue. Okay? So I'm not trying to represent it as that there is no problem here. However, the, with the parapet and the fact that there's going to be a five-foot buffer zone between the parapet and the roof deck, there, that is mitigating it to some degree. It is. Oh, I don't know. Which one is yours?
No, we really can't have this.
Oh, you can't do it back and forth.
Back and forth.
Sorry. Sure. The, I'm also personally concerned about the trees when they do the excavation because I'm sure that that magnolia tree does have roots that are coming into the property. But this isn't the first time that's ever been dealt with, you know? So I think that when they do the shoring, there's going to have to be a lot of care taken to not tip that tree over. You know, there's got to be a lot of communication with the neighbor to make sure that the construction activity is as least, has a minimum impact on the neighbors. And that's all that we can kind of do, you know, is to say that, that we are going to be very cognizant and very communicative with the neighbors, which you kind of have to do anyways, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? There's still like a vote on the screen, Ruth? Or at least on mine? Okay.
Oh, I got it. Okay. Moved by Vice Chair Menthe, second by Commissioner Carter. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Before we kind of discuss, do we have any questions for staff on some of these items? I have a little list myself, but. No? I think my question is related to, you know, he mentioned, the applicant mentioned condition with the CCNRs related to nighttime hours of the, of the roof deck. Is that something that would be in a condition of approval? Or is it something that, is there a municipal code or something that would require some limit there?
To my knowledge, that's not a standard condition of approval to include it in the CCNRs. They can voluntarily include it in the CCNRs. Generally, what we require to be included are smoking requirements. But we don't normally include noise requirements in the CCNRs. Code enforcement does enforce our, our noise code. I know our, our police department also responds to noise complaints as well.
Okay. Another question related to the excavation and, and trees. I mean, is that part of the building code process would be coordinating that?
Yeah, there's standard rules about shoring that it has to be signed off by engineers and things that happen through the building safety process.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, commissioners, do we have commentary? Oh, yeah, please.
I did want to ask about the sewer line that was brought up. Do we know if that's gone to building and safety? Have they specifically looked at that issue?
So for the sewer line, one of the requirements from the Public Works Department is when a new project comes in, they need to pay a sewer fee to help the upgrade of the sewer line. So they will be paying into that, that fund. In addition, because they're going to be, you know, excavating the property, whatever existing sewer lines are on site are going to have to be redone to, to meet the requirements for this larger development. So that's something that Public Works will look at as part of the onsite improvement plans. Also looking at, you know, will, you know, the question of will the shoring cause stress onto the neighboring property? Once again, like the planning manager mentioned, there are requirements for shoring that building safety signs off on, and, you know, there is not supposed to be any impact to adjacent properties.
Thank you.
I had one last thing that just came to me while we were going through this. Related to the zoning, one of the speakers mentioned they, when they purchased the property, they weren't sure about zoning, and it's not widely known in the neighborhood. I mean, is this, the, the current zoning of this would have been available at the time? Has this changed?
My understanding is this property has been zoned for RMD residential medium density since the last zone code update, comprehensive in 2000.
Okay. Thank you. Comments from commissioners? No? Do we seem, think we need a motion?
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Brissette. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the public comment, and we tried to address concerns, and the Building and Safety Department and its staff should be able to take care of the concerns.
Thank you.
Yep. So moving on. PH 2. Consideration of Site Plan Review Administrative Modification P 2024-0082 to allow a three-story, 46,309 square foot, commercial office development with subterranean parking and associated project design features and site improvements at 5813 to 5835 Washington Boulevard and a Class 32 CEQA exemption. Could we please have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Rahman and Commissioners and community members. My name is Gabriela Silva, Associate Planner in the current Planning Division and the city's case manager for this project. Tonight, I will present the proposed three-story office development at 5813 through 5835 Washington Boulevard, including the project description, entitlement process, and environmental assessment. The applicant's presentation will follow during public comment, and project consultants are also available to answer questions. The project site is comprised of three parcels totaling approximately 22,000, 22,000 square feet located along the north side of Washington Boulevard between Duffy Avenue and Ernest Avenue in the East Washington neighborhood. It is surrounded by a variety of commercial uses to the south, east, and west along the Washington Boulevard corridor and is adjacent to a residential neighborhood to the north in City of Los Angeles. The site is within the industrial general zone and East Washington overlay zone and within the general plan land use designation of general corridor. The project consists of the demolition of the one-to-two-story commercial structures totaling approximately 10,000 square feet, including a caretaker unit and all related site improvements such as landscape and surface parking, as well as a, an existing wireless telecommunications facility. New construction will include a three-story, 41-foot-high, 46,300-square-foot office building with two levels of subterranean parking, including 82 parking spaces. Project design features that address neighbors' concerns regarding noise and construction activity and related site improvements such as landscaping, bicycle parking, loading, and refuse areas. The project process began in 2023 and included community meetings listed here. The attendee at the first meeting only inquired about the anticipated timeline and had no other comments. The four attendees at the second meeting had questions about the traffic, vehicle circulation, and construction activity. Additional public comments were received following publication of this meeting's agenda and expressed similar concerns as well as concerns regarding the removal of trees, effects to bicycle lanes on house populations, and office vacancies. As part of the process, the prior, the project requires approval of a site plan review for the overall development of non-residential projects exceeding 15,000 square feet, an administrative modification for a proposed 10% reduction in the parking stall dimensions, and adoption of a CEQA clearance from the Planning Commission. The existing site plan with proposed demolition can be found on sheet A 019 of Attachment 4, which is page seven of the PDF. The proposed project site plan shown here demonstrates the proposed layout. The building is oriented towards Washington Boulevard and provided, and provides landscape setbacks along Duffy and Ernest Avenues. The two-way driveway to access the subterranean parking is proposed along Duffy and will be limited to only right turns in and left turns out. Loading and refuse collection is proposed at the rear along the alley towards the east side of the site and is proposed to be screened by a solid gate and portions of masonry wall. Of the 82 stalls proposed, 46 will be in tandem configuration and will include nine EV charging stations, nine EV-capable spaces and 17, I'm sorry, nine EV-ready spaces and 17 EV-capable spaces. Three project design features are included in the project, including temporary noise barriers, use of specialized construction equipment, and implementation of a construction relations officer. Additional site improvements include landscape screening and six short-term and 18 long-term bicycle parking spaces. The applicant will go over their proposed design in more detail, but briefly, it incorporates a minimalist material and color palette using primarily CMU and neutral tones. The street-facing facades incorporate a series of breaks for windows, decorative block patterns, and openings to open space pockets. These breaks provide a deep recess to maximize visual relief and venisonation. The elevator provides a focal point towards the center of Washington, of the Washington Boulevard elevation, and the 41-foot-high structure plus rooftop projections complies with the allowable 43-foot maximum height for this zone, and the building mass along the rear is stepped back per code away from the residential neighborhood to the north. Landscape will be utilized at the various levels to enhance the building appearance. As part of the site plan review process, the project has been reviewed for confirmance with applicable development standards such as setbacks in height and office is a permitted land use in this zone and overlay. The project will provide code-required landscaping, including screening landscape. Vehicle and pedestrian circulation has been oriented to minimize potential conflicts along Washington Boulevard and within the surrounding residential streets. Project design features and conditions of approval are incorporated to address noise and construction activity, and all construction activity will be coordinated with any Public Works projects. The requested administrative modification is for a 10% reduction in dimensions of all standard stalls, excluding required accessible stalls and compact stalls, and is presented in conjunction with the site plan review. Although a minimum number of parking spaces no longer required by the zoning code if provided there are minimum required dimensions, in order to effectively utilize the site footprint below the proposed office structure after accounting for placement of necessary vehicle and pedestrian access and of support columns, the applicant proposed, proposes the reduced stall dimensions. Due to the use of tandem parking, the applicant is required to obtain approval of a parking plan. The preliminary plan demonstrates the parking will utilize a parking attendant to manage the parking. Through the implementation of this plan, the requested reduction is appropriate. Staff recommends the addition of a conditional approval to memorializes, which will be read into the record later in this presentation. The project will add new office space to the area. Although there is an existing vacancy rate of 24.8% within Culver City as a whole, this is mostly driven by large vacancies in Fox Hills and Entrada, and is not reflective of the demand for smaller, newer, creative office space such as this for which there is still anticipated demand. As proposed and further conditioned, the required findings can be made for the site plan review and administrative modification as outlined in the proposed resolution. Due to the existing caretaker unit, as part of the review process, applicant is required to submit necessary documentation to the human, I'm sorry, Housing and Human Services Department to ensure compliance with the provisions of SB 8 and subsequent amendments. The city's Housing and Human Services Department will determine if the, if the subject property is exempt from SB 8, and if it is not, the project shall comply with the requirements in compliance with the options allowed by state law. Pursuant to CEQA, the project was assessed as it relates to environmental impacts. Various technical studies were prepared, which determined the project is categorically exempt under Class 32 in fill development projects, as the project meets the applicable criteria as summarized here. In conclusion, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the motion to adopt a Class 32 categorical exemption and approve the project subject, subject to conditions of approval and standard code requirements as specified in Resolution Number 2024-P012, with the addition of the following condition of approval. The applicant shall submit a final parking plan prior to the commencement of any operations, outlining the final details of the parking operations and management, and shall incorporate the use of a parking attendant. The parking plan shall be required to be refined as determined necessary by the current Planning Division to address any concerns that arise in the future through the course of operations and or changes in tenancy. This concludes the staff presentation for this item. Staff is available for any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriela. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner.
I'm sorry, what's the square footage?
46,300.
Okay, thanks.
Please.
So you, you mentioned the office vacancies and its relevance to this. So I know, I know some people, some public commentators mentioned it in their, in their comments that we received by email. Is that why you raised it? Or I was curious why that was part of the presentation?
Yeah, we wanted to provide some background as to the, the land use, even though it is a permissible use in this zone.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, please.
Well, I did want to ask about the, the caretaker unit, the SB 8. I am, I didn't think there was any residential here. If there is, what, what is happening?
Yes, so our records, there, there are records that show that there is a space on this property on the second-story portion of one of the structures that at one point was a caretaker unit. And so because everything on the site will be demolished, we will have to examine that against the SB provisions.
Do we need to know now whether or not we're going to have to replace a housing unit?
There's an option under state law for the housing unit to be replaced off-site. So the first analysis will be, does this housing unit fall within the requirements of, I'll call it SB 8 to be for shorthand, meaning, you know, has there been a tenant there recently? And if so, was the tenant lower income? So that analysis will be done by our, our Housing Division, and then they will provide that information to the, to the applicant, who will then have to demonstrate, you know, are they going to come back and modify this project to provide a unit on site or provide the unit elsewhere? But we don't have the information at this point as to whether there was, this is a SB 8 eligible unit.
So it's possible this could be coming back if there's, if there's, if there's a unit?
I, I, this is totally speculative.
I know, I understand.
And it would be up to the applicant to demonstrate how they would comply with SB 8. So I raise that because SB 8 provides the option of providing a unit off-site somewhere.
There's, I think in one of the letters and also. There's, I think in one of the letters and also mentioned the bike lane kind of conflict or something. Can you elaborate on that for me, Gabriela?
Sure. So we did discuss this with our Public Works Department, Mobility and Traffic Engineering, and they confirmed that they are anticipating a Phase Two of the bus and bicycle lane project that would extend over into this neighborhood, and they have a tentative schedule when that would happen, and so that would move forward, and if construction was occurring simultaneously, it would be coordinated. So this, the construction activity for this project would not delay or impact that schedule.
Okay, I, that, that makes a lot more sense. I was worried that it was some kind of curb cut issue that, you know, got in the way. Okay, it's just a, a phasing thing. Okay, great. Okay, if we don't have any, oh, please.
Eighty-two parking spaces, is that standard for a building this size?
I'm not sure if it would be standard, but this rate would be less than what we required when we had a parking requirement.
I'm worried about that much more traffic in a already very congested area. And only 10 full EV chargers?
Yes, I believe nine.
Oh, nine, right, okay.
Why don't we let, have the applicant do their thing, and then we can grill them a little more about it if we need to.
Okay.
Ask questions. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Can I have a second, please? Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Berset, second by Vice Chair Menthe. Please vote. Thank you, motion passes with five ayes.
If we could start with applicant presentation?
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. So my name is Sarah Houghton. I'm with 360 Land Use Representative for the matter. Red Car and their applicant team is here as well. So I'll answer a couple really brief questions on the caretaker's unit, and then we'll have a presentation of the design of the building and be available for other questions. So I know the caretaker's unit is of great interest, and so the team will comply with the state law. We believe that it is not applicable to this unit. It is a caretaker's unit, so by nature it is accessory use. It is not a standalone residential dwelling unit. And at the time that we were going through the application process, we had not yet assimilated all the documents to prove this out under the updated state law. The state law was just updated in January. We had submitted last year, and so we will be complying with that. Again, we do not think that this unit, that the law is applicable to this unit as a replacement unit. So we don't plan, we, we do not anticipate that, but we will be providing further documentation. That will suffice. Thanks.
Thanks for that background.
So I'd like to introduce Mike Namba with Red Car.
Thanks, Sarah. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Mike Namba, representing the applicant Red Car Properties. I am going to just introduce, so we have, are supporting a team in the chambers, but also online. We have ESA, Environmental, to respond to any CEQA-related questions. Elkins Cult is also online to address any land use items that you guys might be curious about, and Gibson's also online to address any traffic-related questions. And obviously Sarah's here with 360, and I'm going to hand it over to John Frame with HGA to present our project for us, and we'll be available for questions after the presentation.
Thank you.
Hi, John Frame, HGA Architects. Great presentation, Gabriela. You've covered a lot of the basics, so I'll try not to repeat too many things. But, let's see, there we go. Just to orient you a little bit on the site from a different perspective, this is at a, you know, we think it really, and our client thinks it's a great location, you know, within Culver City. It's a kind of gateway point coming in off the 10 freeway. It's right where you transition to Adams Boulevard, as was described. You know, this is the, the east end of the commercial corridor. On the north side, we back up to the multifamily residential, which transitions to Los Angeles. So when we, we thought about this project, you're thinking about it as a, you know, an urban infill project for this part of your community and bringing some much, you know, much advantageous kind of street life to the neighborhood. We conceived it as a kind of giant, beautifully built woven basket that really embraced in a new urban context, the idea of this indoor-outdoor relationship that so defined the kind of character of Los Angeles architecture for a long time. So the volume you see here, the exterior facade is about 30% open in various ways. All the windows are set back 12 inches. Many of the openings open onto terraces or open onto screened patios. And so this idea of this kind of, what would be normally just an office building, but actually it becomes an office building that becomes sort of half landscape and half building was kind of one of the, the driving ideas behind the way we thought about it. Sorry, one other thing. Oops, do I go back? Can't go back. Can't go back. The, the second thing that was really important to us and to our client was the sustainability of the project. So we're deploying a really novel, or actually not novel, very historic way of building buildings in Southern California, which is via thermal mass. So the building will be entirely built out of 12-inch-thick exterior walls, which eliminates the need for a whole other assemblies of material. So it'll be made out of low-carbon concrete as well. Adding to that, the exterior fenestration, in addition to all of these balconies and terraces and landscape on it, has operable windows. And on the east and west facades, we purposely placed deeper terraces to provide extra solar exposure and to recess the occupiable spaces back from those edges. It also has a sustainable water plan and the addition of numerous new trees onto the site. From a kind of community point of view, Red Car has worked for decades, Mike, with a local steel fabricator, and so they'll do all of the windows and doors for the project in addition to all of the metalwork in the project. So that was, it's really important for them and the way they kind of support the local economy. Just moving to the site plan, maybe, you know, just recapping a few things Gabriela hit. We've placed the entry focused on Washington Boulevard with, right now, I think there's a couple curb cuts on Washington, but all of our curb cuts, looking forward to the future bike lane, are on the side of the building to come into the parking on Duffine, as she described, all in and out there. Per year zoning codes and rules, all the loading and deliveries will happen off of the alley, so no impact to either of the two streetscapes for that. The building's organized around a central courtyard in the middle with this perimeter of varying depths of landscape from the planters to the deeper enclosed terraces. We've taken advantage of the five-foot setbacks on Duffine and Ernst to increase the landscape on those edges, edges. And in addition to that, we've enhanced the parkway landscape. So right now, there's a few cuts for the palm trees, but we've, we've expanded that to the entire strip along the sidewalks, so there'll be a nice buffer between the sidewalk and that bike lane. And we've also added six new Chinese flame trees here, which is the tree that you designate for this area, which will greatly enhance the landscape experience as you're walking down the street. This is a little blown-up section, just to kind of show you a little bit more of that layering and that indoor-outdoor relationship in the project. So starting from the street, that future designated bike lane, and then the buffer of landscape. You see here on the left side of this, the series of screened terraces, open terraces, all of them have significant landscape planters between them and the streetscape, which will provide this kind of overflowing greenery down into the environment and actually kind of create a cooling effect in that area. And then where we do have the glazing, it's stepped back 12 inches with the operable glass. So I just wanted to take you maybe through a little stroll down Washington. I think that the streetscape, back, a screened terrace there on the corner with the open terraces above it. As you move along the street, at each bay, it's a full-height glass window that allows you to look in, but recessed back, so we have some depth. There's multiple places in the facade where you will look all the way through the building, actually to the landscape on the backside of the building. And there's moments where you even look into the building, and then you look back into these screened courtyard entries to the various tenants' units. So again, trying to kind of play with this relationship of indoor and outdoor in the space to really bring the landscape into the project. When you come to the entry point marked by this significant red concrete elevator that marks the entry point, you can see all the way through the building to the center courtyard that organizes all the public circulation to encourage people to ambulate on foot. The entry is flanked by significant landscape on either side. And as you pull back from there, you can see that particularly in the center portion, we've really opened up the building as you go up to the point where you can actually look up, and the terraces are set far back, and you can see to the sky. And as we move, continue to move kind of east, you see the relationship of enhancing the parkway scape along the street edge, as well as the setback planters. You know, again, views deep through the building, seeing the landscape beyond. And then as we move kind of away from the building towards the, the west, that continued double layer of landscape both on the street to create a buffer to the bikeway and then the edge of the building. And then as you kind of pull away further, again, this, both corners, open terraces to kind of relieve the mass on those edges, and the idea that at night, the building becomes a kind of glowing lantern lit from inside so that there's kind of light spilling out of the windows onto the streetscape, but not doing light pollution with exterior fixtures and things like that. And we're, we're really hoping that this project will be a kind of bridge in this part of the neighborhood, bringing kind of an active visibility and street life to the project, you know, 24/7. And that, thank you, we'll open up to questions.
Commissioners, do we have questions for the architect?
Hi.
Hi.
You know, I, I don't really have any questions. I was just going, I appreciate all the, the details. I was going to ask about the parking. Is there any? Is there any way to do less parking? I think you're within a mile of the train station, right?
We are within a mile of the train station.
Yeah, and that new bike lane's going in. And in 10 years, like California is not going to sell gas cars anymore. Can we do anything to minimize that parking and/or increase the EV chargers?
The, okay, so there's two questions.
Yes.
The first part of the question is the parking, currently the parking ratio. It's a 44,000-square-feet building serviced by 88 stalls, which roughly, and when we, when we go to lease, there's a load factor associated with it. So the parking ratio will be sub-two per thousand. Right now, the market demands three. We don't provide that because of all the things that you mentioned. There's a bike, bike, we want to encourage that, we want to, I encourage the trains. And for us to reduce the parking stalls, we would have to reduce it by half because you basically just eliminate a sub-training tray, which would severely undermine our ability to lease it. So for the moment, yes, we have the 88 stalls, and the ambition is to be able to repurpose that in the future as the demand for cars go down. So the current project as it stands is parking deficient. That said, all the things that you mentioned, like the public transportation, the bike stalls, it is being utilized, and the tenant class for our buildings, our observations are that the parking impact, it, it's staggered. It's very staggered. So it's not like a 50s Dr. Seuss movie where they all show up at the same time and leave at the same time. It's very staggered, it's very, there's no real peak time. So we have projects that do have less parking. The tenants buy it all up, but it's rarely used at its maximum capacity at any, at any given point, and the desire is for that to eventually go down. With regard to the EV, the application is EV-ready, so we're complying with the code. More often than not, we day two, immediately after, the demand is for EV, so we install them immediately, but the application has what we're required.
How many, how much bike parking?
Hi, so we have nine short-term. Yes, sorry, I should have introduced myself. We have nine short-term and 18 long-term.
Okay.
Bike parking stalls. So we have some stalls on Washington, several on Ernest, and then the long-termer in the below-grade parking, along with showers and lockers for bicyclists who come to the site.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, if I may correct that, there's six short-term, yes, on-site, and they're providing additional six short-term off-site, assuming that that can be approved by Public Works because it would be in the right of way.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I was wondering if you could comment on feedback you've received from the community and any changes you've made to the project in response to that feedback?
Is there specific?
I mean, I, there was a lot that we got in our email, and I was wondering how much you've heard through the community meetings, if, if there are any changes in, in response?
The community meeting that we had, the second one, there were a few comments. It was primarily revolved around the construction activity, which we kind of discussed and further elaborated in the, in the construction management plan. The recent feedback that we received from the committee through email had more to do with the project type and what was occurring on the street level. If there, I don't know what the specific ones, but I recall one where it was a question of whether there would be a retail component on the ground floor. I don't know if that was the main concern. That's one that points out. With regard to retail, we like retail, but at this juncture on the Washington corridor, we're not retail specialists by any means, and it's usually if we implement retail, it's, it's usually an amenity to the, to the building, a public amenity that the public could use as well. But for this project, we, we leaned into the office use because of the evolutionary stage where Washington Boulevard currently is. It's not quite downtown, it's not, it's kind of in this middle area, so we just couldn't afford a vacant space or the, it was just, the office was a much better, much better strategy for us.
And, and so it's one of the other concerns that, that I had read in, in the comments, and I, I mentioned it to the staff, was the potential for office vacancies. Now, obviously, y'all are building offices, and so you believe that they won't be vacant because you talk about, and I don't know if it, is this part of Culver City or, or, I don't know, where's just where you see the market going, but, but your confidence that is apparent?
And then retail.
Yeah.
So that's the baseline. So with regard to our, the product that we're delivering, we're getting leases. So in COVID in Culver City, we're signing office leases. We have an existing tenant just a couple blocks away on Los Yenigan Fairfax, and they just took another 30,000 square feet, and they're interested in expanding into more. So the activity is there. I think what differentiates this type of product is, is the care that we put into the things like hiring John Frame's office to incorporate landscape, incorporate outdoor areas. And we treat the office not as an And we treat the office not as an office destination, but it's really almost like the first home for a lot of the, the executives and CEOs who are looking for a place of business. So there's a lot of care that goes into it. And I think that what we're observing is that differentiates us from the vacancies that we're seeing. It's very different from Entrada. It's not, it's not a 60,000 square foot floor plate, glass box. This has articulation, it has private outdoor areas. It engages the street, there's a lot of landscape. So the moment you step in, it's very difficult to tell whether you're in your space or not yet, when you've come off the public right away. So that's been a successful formula for us at Redcar, and we're, we're still leaning into it. And we see that, that, that sector is still strong, and they're looking for office space.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So thank you for the presentation. We'll have the rest of our public comment. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I want to fully address your question because there were a number of adjustments that we made following, I think, the second meeting. The, there was, there were some comments about how kind of open the streetscape on the ground level was. And we, via those comments, we actually made sure that every single bay was open and transparent to the street due to that comment. There are also some comments about our setback from the alley. And as you probably know, you know, you can step it, but we purposely set it all the way back about 18 feet from the alley, except for on the, the ground level where the loading is, to provide kind of enhanced setback on that backside as well from those comments.
Thank you. Yeah, please.
Sorry, I had one, one question about the, so the entryway where you can see through it. It's private though, right? So is there a gate, the, the office tenants have a key card or something?
There's a gate, but it's an open gate visually transparent. And I think, you know, probably Mike, I'd let you answer kind of how they, they address the kind of openness of it. But typically, it's a key card or something like that to allow people in. But visually, the way we've designed it, we want people to be able to look through that and see into the courtyard and actually see through the space. It's, it's good for us from a kind of safety point of view and a visibility point of view, but it also makes for a more inviting experience for people.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, our, how many speakers do we have?
We have five speakers registered.
Okay, can we have two minutes apiece, please?
I will read out the names of the speakers so you know which order you're in. Our first speaker is Brian Bartelt, Lilia Kane, Steve and Keim, Matthew Cervantes, and George Jaeger. I will call on Brian.
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Brian Bartelt, I live on Ernest Avenue. I'm here along with a number of my neighbors who have enjoyed in person and online. We just wanted to express our concerns. We understand that change is inevitable, but this project as it stands raises a lot of concerns for us. For example, my neighbor at 5814 is concerned, he was right next to it. He's concerned that the shadow of it is going to kill his garden in the front yard. He's been working on it for years, he's a longtime resident. Steve, who I think is going to comment later, they have a newborn child, they live right next to it. They're worried about the noise. We're all worried about the traffic, we're all worried about parking. Parking in our neighborhood is just terrible. We're all, we're worried about the years of construction and the dust and the noise. It's, 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 you know, the, the concerns are many. There are three large coral trees on the site that provide habitat for red haired parrots that are endangered. I don't think that's really considered in the environmental concern, but I've spotted them there. I can bring in, they come in the fall, I can bring in pictures later. And then really, I, I know that we've addressed the, the office space issue to some extent, but I really think that there's a, there's a trend towards increasing vacancies in office space in the area. If you go down Jefferson, if you go down Fairfax, if you go down Adams, if you go down Washington, there's vacancies all over the place. I myself work at Amazon Studios, and I go into that office maybe once a week. They're big, beautiful, wonderfully designed buildings that are empty four days out of the week. Really, like, people still are working remotely. And the trend, the tendency to need office space is definitely declining even now after the pandemic. And I, excuse me. And during all this noise and dust, and in the end, what are we going to get from it? The residents, we're going to get more traffic, that's really all we're going to get.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lilia Kane. Lilia, she's not online, and I believe she's not here, so we'll skip her. Our next speaker is Steve Keim. Steve, you are unmuted.
Hello, House members, can you hear me today?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, great, thanks. Appreciate you having us here today. You know, I just wanted to address like three quick things. One, the vacancy rate, which I think is vastly understated. The nuisance, which I, I believe, you know, the folks who spoke earlier understated the nuisance that would occur to our street. And finally, how bad this is for our community in the sense that it doesn't add any value. But before I hit that, I just wanted to mention the caretaker unit, which has come up a few times. From my eight month old son's window, I can see this caretaker unit. From what I can tell, it appears to be an Airbnb that is used at the benefit of the folks who currently lease the building, far from a caretaker unit. So it's hard for me to understand that there would be some sort of benefit to the folks who are going to redevelop this building and get credit for having a caretaker unit when they are already using it. Below the caretaker unit, as it's called, there's large piles of trash. There's feces on the property from, again, vacant buildings down the street where unhoused individuals are living. It's a little disappointing to hear the defense of this caretaker unit that, in all I can tell, is basically being used as a, a place to have friends and family of the current occupants. So with that in mind, again, I'll talk about the vacancy rate. I, I believe there are way too many vacant office spaces in the area. You know, earlier Jennifer Carter asked for less parking. The reality is, our street, which is on the border of Los Angeles and Culver City, is, is used as an overflow for parking of a gym across the street, Cliff's Divide. It's a great addition to our community, but they do not have enough parking, so.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cervantes.
Matthew? Hello, good evening. Hi, I'm a resident of Ernest Avenue as well. I sent a written comment prior to this meeting. Wanted to reiterate this major concern of construction traffic, just having a plan. You know, we've had some, we've had some construction, you know, ADUs on our block. And, and you know, a single, you know, a single construction project can pretty much bring the entire block to a halt. So, you know, of course, if this is going forward, we do need to be sure that, that us residents are going to have access to, you know, for the entirety of the day. You know, if the alleyway is being used, I would like to hear from the city if you have plans for alleyway rehabilitation. Currently, it is nearly impossible to drive through without falling into a pothole. You know, it's, it's, it's in really bad disrepair. So, you know, immediate action item would be prepared, would be preferred. But if, you know, if this project does move forward, we'd like to see that. Other thing, of course, is, is we've already heard parking. You know, we're currently impacted by the Cliff's Divide gym. You know, last I checked, it was short about 80 spaces, given its size. You know, and gym patrons, they prefer to park on Ernest Avenue, probably Dauphin Avenue also, because it's for not to pay for parking on Washington Boulevard. We see it on social media, they, that they'll, that they'll promote to park in, in the Los Angeles neighborhood on our side. I'm seeing red curb, I'm seeing bike lanes. This is only going to make things worse. And of course, if, we're not certain if these future tenants are going to be provided with parking. And so they may just prefer to park on Ernest and Dauphin because the parking options are tandem from what we're hearing. And of course, as always, I mean, it's an ongoing issue, but public safety, you know, just want to be sure that this project isn't going to bring in, you know, additional transient to our neighborhood.
Time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is George Jaeger.
Me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I, I just want to reiterate everything that the previous speakers have talked about. And there's basically the parking, I myself live on Ernest. And there's a construction next door to me, which, like the previous speaker said, has pretty much took our block to a halt as far as the, the traffic and the, and the parking. Granted, this is a dead end street, but the parking has always been a big problem, especially with the gym across the street. And now, the main concern for all, most of us here on the street and probably the other streets around is parking. Like you said, I don't know if, I don't know if there's going to be parking underground in the, in the new building that they're planning on constructing. But the main thing is going to be the parking, which is already a nightmare, and it's going to make the nightmare even worse. So I'm hoping that that, that situation will be looked at before they even begin the construction. And then the construction itself is going to make, make it impossible to, you know, to get in and out of the street because of, I'm assuming of all the construction equipment that they're going to be using and stuff like that. So it's just going to be one big nuisance. And it's just going to be one big nightmare for all the residents here on Ernest and probably the surrounding streets as well. So I myself, I would hope that they would reconsider this and plan better.
Thank you. That is the end of the registered speakers, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we?
Chair, we have, maybe one would do.
If you can just register with the clerk, and then she can.
What's your name?
Barbara Bridges.
Bridges?
Mm-hmm.
Bridges, okay. All right.
Hi, my name is Barbara Bridges. I've lived on Ernest Avenue since I was two years old. I'm probably older than everybody in this room. The point I want to make is, nobody mentioned, failed to say that Ernest Avenue is a dead end street. It's a narrow, dead end street. Now, even if you want to progress, fine. But when they do, they have to have some provisions for the neighbors. That's my only concern. And nobody in front of your building looks like us on your picture. There's no walkability. Where are they going to walk to? The freeway? So, thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
We do not have any additional speakers, Chair.
Okay. So do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Can I have a second, please?
I clicked second.
Oh, I got you.
Okay.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Brissette, second by Commissioner Jones. Please vote. Thank you, move, motion passes with five eyes.
Comments from commissioners? Please, Commissioner Jones?
I've got some, some questions for, for staff real quick, too. So I think, so the comments, a lot of comments alluded to this, and then our last commenter said it, about, you know, dead end streets and like narrow dead end streets. And I, I mean, that amplifies, I think, a lot of the effects that building going to have on a neighborhood, but I think especially during construction. And could you say something about how that, I mean, so like, one, one resident said specifically, are we going to have access to our street all the time? Or is that going to be a problem? I mean, how's that, how's that handled during the, during construction?
So the applicant is required to submit a final management plan. There is a preliminary one that was attached to the staff report. And there are no street closures as part of that construction management plan. So they'll have to coordinate accordingly to provide parking for the construction crew so that it does not impact surrounding public streets. And they're, they will not be allowed to do sidewalk closures as well, except when they're repairing the sidewalk. And the same thing goes for the alley. So the alley will be required to be repaired. Typically, that does happen at the end so that, you know, once they've done everything, they put in a nice alley and they don't damage it. So we don't anticipate for a temporary one during construction, but it will be repaired, replaced and repaved. And that will be when they will be allowed to close it essentially.
Gotcha. So, so the alley will remain open except for when it's being repaved. But there are parts of it, I'm imagining, or I can, I haven't been on this particular alley, but I'm picturing big trucks, stuff like that's going to get damaged even more than it maybe already is during construction, and that, it won't be fixed until the end, probably.
Correct.
And, and is there, is there an estimate of how long that construction period is?
I don't have it offhand. I'm sure we have it somewhere in here, I can, I can find it, or we can have the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
I believe you, to add on to Commissioner Jones about the construction management, you mentioned a construction community relations.
Yes, so one of the projects, sorry to interrupt. One of the project design features is that they're required to have a construction relations officer. And it does outline the duties there, but part of that is to have continued coordination with other construction projects, including the city's project, and coordination with the community.
Someone mentioned, so I'm, I'm very interested in this caretaker unit. Almost, you know, just curious about it, it's interesting. I, I don't know if this is, how this would factor into the SBA analysis, but someone mentioned that it might be being used as an Airbnb. Just encourage you, when you're looking at it, to take that into account, too. And the other, the other thing that occurred to me, you, I heard you mention, you know, who's living it? If, if someone's currently living in it, and what's, you know, what's their income level? The other thing that, and I don't know, maybe you have no off the top of your head whether this applies or not, but whether it could be, could fall under rent control would be something else to look at. On, let's see. The other thing that I, that I wanted to ask about, and I, and again, I don't know how this would factor into, because I guess this is falling under CEQA exemption, but the mention of the parrots, and I've seen the parrots in that neighborhood. So I, I believe they're there. I think I even have a picture of them on my phone. But, and I can, and I know the coral trees they're talking about. Is that something that, I guess if this wasn't exempt from CEQA, would that, would that have been looked at at all? Or is that even something that would, that factors into how these projects are looked at?
Can we, can we have ESA respond to that question? They're online, correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm online. I'm Lucy Hayes Fisher, I'm with Environmental Science Associates. And the Class 32 covers a lot of different issue areas. And there is one criterion that does look at the value as habitat for endangered, rare and threatened species. And we did not find any at the time when we did the work.
Okay, I think those are all my questions I can do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks.
One more comment about the parrots. Yes, so there is a federal law regarding migratory birds. And so it does restrict demolition or construction activities or tree removals that occur during a certain period. So they would have to comply with that as an overarching federal regulation.
Okay, that's interesting. So I don't, we aren't in a position to do that right now. But for residents, is there a way for them to say, hey, this bird, this tree is a habitat for migratory birds? How would that happen?
I think it's related, there's a certain number of months that are like the migratory season. And if it's outside that period where it's nesting, I think nesting season, that's where there's sort of restrictions surrounding it. But if it's, doesn't, if construction doesn't occur during that time, then it isn't applicable.
I see. And the coral trees are going to be, are they going to be removed? Yeah. Okay. So, okay, just turning to my comments on the project. I think I do like the looks of this building. I think I, so the applicant had reached out to me and I saw their presentation a couple of months ago. And I thought at the time, it kind of resembles a couple other older office buildings on Washington, like thinking of like three or four blocks west of there, superficially, but is much cooler looking, more interesting. I think it's interesting because actually the block right now doesn't, I mean, looks great, I think, actually. The, what's already there, oftentimes we're looking at like, I don't know, an empty lot they're building on or like an old building that's being torn down that doesn't look so great anymore. But I do think this is nice looking. I think, you know, we heard from and got emails from a lot of neighbors that I think you get a feel for kind of the fabric of a community around this area. And it's always concerning when, I don't know, we get comments like that and they're very opposed to a building and kind of don't understand what, don't see what's in it for them. And often, I think, you know, when there is something like, you know, some people mentioned having some kind of retail component. And I think that that, it doesn't satisfy a lot of the concerns necessarily, but can help, you know, see a little bit of the benefit. But oftentimes also that that's not enough for neighbors. I'm, you know, I'm interested in this, the office vacancy question. And I thought it was an interesting point that the applicant made about the types of offices they're building kind of versus what, you know, was built decades ago. And maybe there's not as much of a market for, but there is a market for this kind. At the same time, you know, I'm thinking from the city planning perspective of, I know that like, you know, thinking about my day job and our office that we, the company I worked for downsized the office, but it also is still mostly vacant most of the time. And like, they still think it's, you know, worth the money they're paying for it. They still have the lease. They're probably not planning on downsizing anymore. But I think a lot of companies are kind of like that. And so from, you know, it's one thing is like, is it worth it to build this so we can sell this lease? And, you know, companies thinking, is it worth it to pay this money for this lease so that we can have this office space? But I think as a city, we can say, is this, is this the best use of our space? Could we be using it for something better? I'm thinking of this also in the context of our general plan discussions. This is a corridor that's going to be zoned MU1. There could be housing there, you know, maybe not as much as some of us want, but there could be housing there. And this is right across the street from what's going to be MU2, which is even more dense housing. And all these, there are going to be a lot more people living in this neighborhood over the coming decades. And, you know, if it's a, if it's an office building that is, you know, not vacant, but a lot of space that isn't being used, it does make me question a little bit, you know, what is this, what is this bringing to the neighborhood? Not just for the neighbors that are there now, but like the neighbors that are going to be there. That said, I think for me, those kind of questions are broader planning questions and not about this specific project.
If you pull on that thread a little bit, though, the, you know, the housing that'll come near creative office space gets cars off the street because you're, you know, you're in that 15-minute community.
Yeah, the people that, the people that work here could be, could be living in those.
That's right.
In those new houses, yeah. I do, I do take that into consideration. And I think it's easy to lose sight of that. There's not zero amenity from office in a neighborhood, but it is a, it is an area that has a lot more office than housing. To me, anyway, like there's a jobs, housing imbalance.
But there's also, along that corridor, there's a lot of retail versus office or housing, you know, further down to in other directions.
I take your point. And I know that, you know, I live, I live near the last project we heard. I live like by the DMV. And so like that side of Culver City, sometimes I can feel like it's collapsed. But my friends live in West Adams. We go along Washington. And when you drive that stretch, you are in kind of the arts district where you've got a lot of, you know, more restaurants, more retail.
Like pockets instead of a continuum.
Yeah, and then it kind of breaks off. And I think that that, what the land use map is trying to do in that area is build, so there is an existing neighborhood. I don't want to say there's not an existing neighborhood, but it's trying to, it is trying to build a new neighborhood kind of in the Blackwelder area with more density. And this office is going to be part of that. But it gives me pause when, and I'm, you know, in my third year here, and we are proving so many office projects and not a lot of housing. I know it's going to, I know it's changing, but I just want us to keep that in mind as we look at these things. And I think, and I think to the neighbors' concerns about finding ways to mitigate downsides. And I know that parking is a big issue. I feel like every project we look at, people in the neighborhood say, wow, parking is so bad in our neighborhood. Parking is really bad in my neighborhood. It's, it doesn't feel like something that we can, again, like address on a project-by-project basis. But with parking and with building a lot of parking comes more traffic. And that is something that I think can be mitigated. And I like that we're seeing more projects that are building what is under what the minimum was. Because I, because my belief is, and I know, I know that not everyone feels this way and not everyone can picture this, but my belief is that building less parking will result in less traffic than you would get otherwise. And I do see that as a mitigation. And I want to be, I want to be thinking about what are other ways to mitigate effects on the neighborhood and to build, you know. So like, to your point, you know, just having, I think, more housing in this area that has a lot of, a lot of offices is a way to mitigate those impacts. Because there will be more people, you know, like one of the residents said, where are they going to walk to? If we are having in this neighborhood more things that people can walk to, whether it's where they live or where they work or where they shop or where they go to school, whatever it is, then that's going to make this project and all the other projects that we're going to see in this neighborhood, because we're going to see a lot more. Yeah, it's going to ease the growing pains. But I don't think there's a way to stop the growing pains, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Those were my comments. Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. So I'm so glad the neighbors came here to talk, you know, because this is a hard neighborhood. It's a hard neighborhood. It's neglected, not just because it's at the edge of the jurisdictions. It's neglected for all the reasons that Ms. Bridges pointed out and alluded to, right? This neighborhood, you've got a few small streets there. And I know this area pretty well. You know, I, you think the Cliffs of Ith is bad. Remember Dogtown CrossFit there? You know, I used to belong to that. And I was one of those jerks that would park in your neighborhood and try to park on your street because I was looking for a place to park. And there's nowhere to walk to. I used to run, you know, through the potholes there, risking life and limb every time we went past those potholes. I secretly hated this lot because every time they made us round a mile, that building was the mile we had to go past twice. So I know this is a rough, it's a poorly conceived neighborhood with your beautiful residential area just jammed right next to the creek and the freeway in Washington. And I wish there was more that I could do to fix that. And it's, you know, the parking intrusion is a huge problem. It's, you know, and I know you're a mile from the freeway, from the metro, but you're real close to the freeway. And people are going to drive because you're close to the freeway and they're going to do that because it's easy to do. So I'm glad there's, I think, enough parking here that probably people will be parking there. I don't think that, frankly, there's so little parking available on the streets. I don't think you could rationally imagine people working and parking there all day. I just don't think there, that can't be the strategy. And, you know, I'm also disappointed at the lack of amenities. I wish that there were amenities going in this neighborhood. I wish we're making it look like the arts district a few blocks away. And I don't think that's going to happen because it's so close to the freeway. You've got the Arco, you've got the Mobil, you've got the Davis Tires. I just don't, I'm not surprised that's not happening. The, when someone buys this property, what they want to do is to put in a nice discreet office building and try to make that work. So all this is a really long way of saying, there's not a lot of great choices here. I think that this is not as bad as it could be. I think that you're, I know you're missing the tree. That really was a really big tree on the property. It's nice. It feels more open. This is largely to the east of you. The shadows are going to be in the morning, not the afternoon. You're going to get all the afternoon sun because that's largely off to the west. And it's a nice building altogether. You know, if you have to have something new there, and we don't, we do general planning. We don't do central planning. We don't get to say, build this, build that. Don't build this, don't build that. We deal with the code and we permit what the code permits. I appreciate the work that's been done to make sure that you don't have a lot of bright lights at night, you don't have a lot of exterior features. I think that when this is done, you're going to be at least as happy with the neighborhood as you are now. And hopefully, other projects will come in where the Arco is, at the, you know, the Davis Tires, whatever it is, that will eventually be able to bring some amenities to make that a more walkable. So.
Or the tenant that moves in will want an amenity that ends up maybe being public facing at the same time.
I mean, so there's not much that we can do to say, just don't, don't build it. But I'm telling you, you know, this, this could be higher. This could be, you know, when people talk about housing, remember, housing here, you could be talking multiple stories higher. So that's, you know, those are the trade-offs we make. And, you know. Let's hope that our developers out there will sort of think about this more as how do we make this neighborhood work as part of Culver City, especially those of you who don't actually live in Culver City. But, you know, given where the creek is and where all is, they should have just moved the city boundaries and put you inside our city because that's where it makes more sense.
Yeah, I just want to follow up. You know, I had mentioned less parking because the idea is if you take the parking away, you can minimize cars. But I know that area well, too. And I know there's no parking there. And I do pick up and drop off at Cliffs of Ith a couple of times a week. And, you know, the infrastructure isn't there. Like if we, if we committed to bike lanes and clean, I mean, if the infrastructure was there, it didn't, and we got rid of the parking. I mean, but it's sadly just not there. So I also want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking. And about the trees, is it an option to keep the trees?
I think the site plan. I don't see that.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's comments as well. And like, I really appreciate my fellow commissioners' input on this one. This is, you know, represents a really tough, tough situation for the lot, for the area. You know, we want to build more complete streets and more complete neighborhoods. And we're only able to, you know, see what comes forth from the community. Like Commissioner Vice Chair Mathy said, we don't tell people what to build. We administer the plan, administer the code. And I think we all feel the pain of parking in Culver City and the surrounding Los Angeles neighborhoods. I'm on that fringe at Washington and Alenda in that area over there. And I think when we can start to have more people living and working, you know, I rode my bike here because I live close enough here. This isn't my job, but I mean, this is what I do to keep a car off of the street.
Commissioner Brissette didn't comment. Are you going to? Are you wrapping up your comments or?
No, I'm going to.
You're going to go to him?
Yeah, yeah, I just, like, the momentum from the two of them. Sorry. I'll stop, though. Commissioner Brissette?
Hey. I think on the, I think this project feels like a first mover in this pocket. And I know someone will buy that Nuts & More site across the street and probably do residential. I was a little bummed that there's no retail. Even, it'd be nice if the landlord subsidized a little coffee shop. But I do get that. But I do think this is a first mover and will increase. And it's kind of a gateway and I think it'll kind of compress that district, as you said, and increase the vibrancy. As far as the office comments, I'm fully, I fully believe that, you know, there is a flight to quality. And the tenants who want the glass box, big building off the 405, it's not really there. They want this type of smaller boutique product. So, and also the tenants that are coming to this building, I can almost guarantee are not high-density users. This isn't like Facebook coming here and packing 400 people into it. It's probably media tenants who are lower density. So it's actually not that many people. And so they might actually, just given what the developer said about the parking peak, you might not really even notice it, given the density of these users in the area. And I feel confident, I just, I know what this company has built and they hidden tract and right down the street, I think they own something. And they wouldn't be building if they thought it would stay vacant. So I feel comfortable with that. And parking, I appreciate everyone coming out. I mean, that, it's always a huge issue. But I actually think that an office project is right for this corridor at this point. That's my opinion, at least.
Okay. I think without any other questions or comments, we can entertain a more. I think without any other questions or comments, we can entertain a motion.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Brissette, second by Commissioner Carter. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Do we have any action items to discuss? Staff?
I will just make sure everyone heard that on Monday night, the general plan update and the zoning code update did pass at council. So we are now doing second reading on September 9th and then the effective date would be October 9th. So that's a huge achievement for this department.
Do you mind me asking what happened with the amendments? I tried to stay awake, but I was in Cleveland and it was 4:00 AM or something like that by the time.
Unfortunately, I believe they reversed your amendments.
Okay. I tried to stay awake. I fell asleep with my iPad on the bed. Okay, thank you for that.
Also, I was going to let you know, it looks like we, you're going to have the night off on September 11th. We don't have any items on that agenda, but we do have a study session for the sign code update and the Ivy Station amending subdivision on September 25th. So we'll plan on seeing you then.
I may have a conflict on that date, but. Okay, have any public comment for items on, on the agenda shown up?
We have not received any additional ones.
Okay, great. So we can have a motion to adjourn?
Can I have a second please? I can take a voice vote if anybody wants. I have, I have it moved by Commissioner Carter and I'll take a.
A second, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Carter, second by Commissioner Jones. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Thanks, everybody.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:54 PM.
How much longer do we have?